Freeze. Or it's just, I was like, finally, it was part of everything. Thank you. Yay, we got, we got a rhythm. All right, good morning and welcome to the first two thousand twenty-three meeting of Bay County Commission. We're gonna start this meeting out with the pledge of allegiance and then we're gonna get on with the organization account. Stand please. Mr. Sessor, will you lead us?
I would.
And happy new year, everybody.
Yeah.
Okay, so for the county organization, there are a couple of things that fall into this. This is where we decide who's going to be commission president. For the next year, it's also when we designate our purchasing authority and and appoint any board members that need to be reappointed or if we're gonna shift things around. As far as I know, correct me if I'm wrong, colleagues, the only things that we, I don't think we're shifting anything around other than we're gonna reappoint Commissioner Luisas to the NRG RDA, which we did earlier this year, the term had just expired. So first, I'm gonna move that we reappoint Commissioner Luisas to represent the commission on the NRG RDA.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so that done, the only other things to my knowledge that we're moving around is president. And I am gonna move the Commissioner Luisas become president of the commission effective this meeting and I will continue to run this meeting. He'll start running the next one.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, and with regard to purchasing authority, Commissioner Luisas was the purchasing authority in this commission as the backup, the county administrator Ruth Lanier. We have a tradition where we don't have the president be the purchasing authority. I am willing to serve as the person purchasing authority like I did last year.
I make the motion to approve Ms. Taylor's purchase authority.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so, and I also move that we reappoint Ruth Lanier as the purchasing authority with the only exception, that's me as backup, is any expenses for the sheriff's department where her son was employed.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
So I think that's all the administrative stuff we have. We weren't planning to do any other board changes, were we?
Nope.
All right, now, my question of you two, if you want the minute.
I'll do them.
You want to? You don't have to. I was kinda after doing.
No, I'll do it.
But they're looking good now. I was just on them. Those who do them, they're looking really good. All right, Mr. Young, ready go.
Even though you're, even though you're not Mr. Young.
Much better.
Even though you're not Mr. Young, we'll take these from you two.
Yes, we will.
Well, I mean, she can, oh, I gotta sign.
Same, they already had the. Um, well, I was looking at it.
You saw Simon?
Yeah.
And they're approved.
Oh, surprise. Safe house. I thought Brian Safe House was operating in Raleigh County.
They have one in Montgomery, right? Is that right there?
It sounds right. Probably one in Montgomery, maybe one in Raleigh County as well.
No, they definitely have one in Raleigh County, except for the clients near us.
Yep.
Let me just think. Not that I understand these very well. It says Exxon SV non-taxable.
Should've been non-taxable.
Oh. Brown Street. I guess it says it's saying it's in Mount Hope.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Thank you. Doctor by the. Duvernall Center.
It's that new facility over there.
Was that Dan's old place? They're on the, they're on the bypass.
No, it's up, up, the old, um. It's not, it's not that one. This, this is a house, I think. It's got the district on that one thing.
It might have been one, we wanna open up there and get, and it's planned to reopen at some point.
We need to make a motion.
Oh, moves to approve.
Second.
All those in favor? Turn me off. Okay, um, January payroll.
Make a motion to approve January payroll payable on January thirteenth.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, vouchers and minutes. They are caught up twenty twenty-two. Vouchers and invoices? I said vouchers and minutes.
Okay, I have, I have questions on vouchers.
Yes, vouchers and invoices first.
On page two, it, it says from Royal King, fuses and candy. Why do we purchase candy?
Probably because.
And then on first page of the regular.
I'll use the container, yeah, it's a part, so.
And then a two hundred and five dollar and fifty-one cent to the city of Oak Hill for gas reimbursement for extra. Sheriff, you know anything about that one?
What pages I don't know again.
That's next to last. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, ten, eleventh item down.
It was for extradition.
Thank you, Gia, extradition.
Extradition for.
Prosecuting Attorney's Office agreed to reimburse them for gasoline.
Okay, thank you, Gia.
You're welcome.
That's all questions I had.
I'm good.
There's one I want to point out to you on page one where it says fifteen thousand dollars for Bay County payroll, vendor cushion. So part of the problem with our payroll clearing account is guardian is billed in advance. So you have to pay it before it's processed through the system and it puts you on the call. So this creates a cushion there since the clearing account.
Okay.
It's only covered by what we put in there from running payroll, basically. All right, I move we approve the voucher invoices.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, back to minutes. They're complete and current up to the end of twenty twenty-two, so I sent them to everybody last night. And, uh.
Yeah, you can read off all the dates.
Yeah, I can read them all. I know what they were. Oh, they're backwards. All right, so December fourteenth. We had several special and emergency.
There's a sticky right there, Allison.
Sticky right there with all the dates.
All right. So September seventh, September twenty-first, October fifth, October nineteenth, October twenty-fifth, November second, tenth, eleventh, seventeenth, and December seventh, and two meetings on December fourteenth.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye. You have to sign on the bottom of.
Everyone.
Every one of them, yeah.
Do we have any state settlements? No, it's all Commissioner Luisas from its thing. We approve the state settlements.
Second.
All those in favor? Oh, well, I'm gonna let him catch up for a minute. Are you guys filling in this organizational support?
Yeah, she'll have to.
Type it in.
Like we're on the bright and the gray. They weren't even on the label, were they? I noticed a few. Or like, they were from Florida.
Well, it's my fault. We normally wouldn't have that. Well, in the elections, oh. It's not a different. As early as I normally do. Um, all right, so. How many files are we about to land as well? We still have exhibit A time, so let's get on that.
Okay, the first one, through the draft. It's the midterms every year. The elected officials for the budget.
Mm-hmm.
There's a few things like down at the bottom that are highlighted. What, I'm sure what you wanna do with them on the first page. And then.
Are we requiring presentations of everybody?
No, that was in the next thing. If they want to, but it's not a requirement, state code requires they submit a budget. I'd say if the elected officials wanna do a presentation, fine, but I don't think we should require everybody. Just make sure they submit their budget.
I agree with that.
Yeah, unless there's an increase for something substantial. And if they submit it, we can definitely come in and explain it for us. Okay, yeah, I think that's a good idea.
Yeah, we do it all in ten minutes, get all the budgets.
I mean, I would hear a lot quicker, yeah. That, and some people, like regardless of what their positions are, it doesn't necessarily mean they wanna do a presentation.
Yep.
Um, I'd say leave Tanya on there, but I don't think Steve needs, I don't think he has to.
I agree.
Otherwise, any other changes, colleagues?
No, same thing. This reflects the new increases in P E I.
Yeah, we added the nine, nine point seven five percent, maybe two thousand.
Okay.
Yeah, I would prefer this over budget.
Make sure.
Yeah.
Yeah, you always wanna over budget, stuff, stuff changes like that.
Okay. All right, well, I move we approve the letter.
Second with changes.
With the one twenty, but all those in favor?
And can, uh, once Amy redoes the letter, can we just stack her names and scan it?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
Okay, all right, order legalization and review, legal advertising?
Yeah, so this has to be published in the papers, a two week thing.
Hmm.
Remember?
Two weeks ahead of time.
Just to announce.
Sorry, not named, but.
Okay, well, I mean, we publish.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Right, Hyda Grant?
Yeah, this is just the excitement of the. It's the letter.
Well, this is the high intensity drug trafficking area.
I was traveling around, I got the fourth thing there. I was around when Hydas were created.
All right, well, we, we set the hydogram.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye. This is just the courthouse improvement.
Courthouse facilities improvement grant.
Yep.
Approval and signature. Which one is this?
That's what I was like, which one is that?
That's for the sheriff's masonry.
The masonry on the shares.
Oh, the one, okay, I just read that. It's not one of the minutes.
Since Tom's now president, I think it's only a signature for the president.
So we got us, we got approved for it then?
Yes.
Well, we had a ten percent match, was it?
It's twenty percent match.
Twenty percent match. You know what that amounted to?
It's thirty-eight six is what we got, what we were awarded. The full amount was forty-eight thousand.
So that's a brand match.
That's where I remember. Okay, I move we approve and accept the courthouse facilities improvement grant.
Second.
All those in favor?
We're moving.
Okay, brownfields.
So this is a grant consultant contract. Um, where ring ground, our middle was chosen. And we just have to make sure, because I'm the authorized director of that, that y'all are able to be signed with it.
Okay, yeah, I am. I mean, we empower Ruth to side these parts. All those in favor?
Aye.
Yeah, I think I read that in some minutes ago. Did that.
Yeah. And then you learn a lot.
We already did the appointment to the NRG RDA.
Get us to sign the letter.
So we just need some.
Yeah.
Okay.
Saw the waste of forty appointment.
Yeah, and Mr. Davis, he is here.
Thank you for coming this morning. Thank you for applying and volunteering. This is an important board and we've had a very difficult time getting it to getting people to meet and getting people to participate. Um, and I, I could tell by your application and things you said that you realize how important it is.
I've got some experience. I've been twenty, I've been twenty-seven years in the Brown Mink Atlanta, through one of their key broken areas. And worked for the Atlanta Olympic back in ninety-six. We used the composting of city trash and all of the, it's solid waste, but didn't burn off in their methane pits. To, uh, use the lightweight soil, plant the brick barrels and trees and yogurt pans. In a temporary basis till the Olympics are over and then we went back and moved all that back off and threw it all back again, so. I'm very familiar with the tension pond, retention ponds runoff, but that, that solid waste, that one, that, where do you put it? Don't put it in the, where it needs to be separated.
I'm, I'm thrilled that you applied and thank you.
Yeah.
Um, I move that we appoint Mr. Davis to the solid waste.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye. Yeah.
Yep, let's, let's get on the county clerk permit position. Did you research the budget?
Yeah, the budget.
Budget was supported.
The election budget was a leftover process for this year and then, oh, I was thinking about the seminar, um, two separate kind of questions. Um, I can request to add that position on my budget, within our budget. I would definitely like to keep our room.
We'll have a letter for you here in a second.
A great asset to have office.
I'll move, I'll move we approve it.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And thanks for being flexible with my arm.
But your arm's not as flexible.
That's making a good team. Is GST gonna participate in this?
He said he was gonna try to get on at ten o'clock.
Okay, so I'm gonna go ahead and move to observed holidays. That is ours. All of the other ones are ours, so we'll just knock those out and get GST in at ten. Um, so on the observed holidays, Ruth, you wanna present?
Yeah, so, um, I guess since we've been involved in payroll and not before, um, we're looking at observed holiday, so, you know, if you work Monday through Friday, you get paid for the observed holiday, but if you're like, you're seven day week, twenty-four seven, like nine-one-one law enforcement sometimes apart. They're working on the actual holiday. They're not getting paid, but the people on the observed holidays are getting paid. And I think it should be a different policy for the seven day a week employees, because it's like on Christmas Eve and Christmas. Yeah. So they're working. I think that they should go by observed holidays, the seven day week employees.
Absolutely.
I move we approve that.
Second.
All those in favor?
Wait there.
One.
We had more to add.
This, effective this current payroll, so December twenty-fifth forward, so this one time, there will be like the people on the observed and the actual, because they signed up to work the observed in the nine-one-one center and law enforcement.
So effective.
So one time, so effective, after this payroll would only be the actual, this one would be actually observed for those departments. That way nobody's shortchanged, basically.
Just say.
I want to make sure I understand is we do our for a year, so for example, like you saying, Christmas fell on weekend, deputies nine-one-one working, but actual holiday, not the actual holiday, but the holiday that deserved was Monday. So my question is, would that be a regular workday for everybody else on that Monday?
Yes.
During, and then that day would, we just kind of like moving the holiday to the actual day that's what we.
Yeah, I realize, and it's not that many holidays.
No, not this year.
Yeah, this year's not like Fourth of July, I don't think, but most of them, it's like, you know, it's a certain Monday or a certain like Thanksgiving, that Thursday and Friday. So it's only the holidays that actually switch days every, like the day a week or whatever the effects, but I still think. But this time, only this pay period, you're observed and I shall get paid, because they did get sign up to turn that over.
I think it's, that's a little strange to do it. If somebody works on Christmas Day, and they observe it Monday, they're not paid for Christmas Day, they're paid for Monday.
Right, that's how it's been.
But they, what if they don't? Okay.
Yeah.
What if, what if they, what if they don't work Monday? Are they still paying for the, uh?
It would be in the actual holiday, so.
Okay.
If they, if they, if they're awful Mondays, then they all.
Okay, I get it.
They got paid.
I'd make sure I got it understood, it was not the difference.
I just wanna make sure if it was three, you work for the whole year, but I wanted this year to hold holidays, get it all signed up. And like when it's a habit day, we always, they aren't working, not essential, meaning they, stuff like that. But the parent yourself, Ruth, the child herself that's on the city, not saying not essential, they're all essential, but deputies who obey us, detective bureau, stuff like that, they would deserve it on that Monday because it's observed.
Yeah.
All right, so move, what Ruth?
Second.
All those in favor? All right, so, um, at this time, I propose we go into executive session to discuss some personnel decisions, staffing and, and annual raises. And we can take a break and route anything that needs to.
Thank you.
So executive session nine twenty-four.
But recording.
All right, we're back on the record a little late at ten oh seven. And we did discuss some personnel issues in chambers, no decisions made. Um, however, one of the matters we discussed were personnel raises. I wanna start with Teresa Gregory, who we brought in today. And based on discussions with, uh, the DRC board members that I was able to reach, I recommend that we raise her salary to sixty-five thousand a year effective this pay period.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations and thank you for the good work.
Thank you all.
Wanted to recognize all that you've done and we've talked about it at length in chambers and, and just the changes have been phenomenal. This is the first time we haven't had to worry about that place for a long time.
And as a whole, and then just think that it's so beneficial in so many ways. There's so much going on. I, I for example, renovation and a big thing to be the middle, it's about no, it's not horrible here. You got your own, you know, non-criminal island. Um, so who's over there ignoring what they gotta do and just have it there? Everyone do that again because they might go work out anything with the status of it. What we're, so.
You've done a great job.
It's great. The judges, you restored their faith in the program, the community's faith in the program, and I mean, I actually heard somebody talking, singing your praises who has a, a family member in your program. And so it's neat to go out and hear that and hear how things changed so much because that family member had been in the program before. And so that the family member was just just saying how wonderful you were and how wonderful this family member of hers thought you were and, and everybody over there, the ambiance has changed. And on the fiscal front, that's changed. I mean, the center is basically supporting itself. And I'm hopeful with some help from us when, when all the parties are ready to pull the trigger, that we might be able to expand per your suggestion into the valley. I think, I think we've already shown that, you know, this program up here is starting to stand on its own feet and.
It's definitely a unique collection of, um, purposes that we all, unique to a certain.
Democratism.
That, that we are overlooked and. Everything is. It's been, would be awesome. Be a wonderful thing and. I'm ready, I just wanna do it.
Okay, well, we'll get, we'll get that on, in fact, if you, you know, if you've gotten the data together, maybe we can get a budget presentation from you and uh, we can make some decisions then, because we're gonna make spending decisions in February, so that'd be the time to, to get it to us. Seemed like I had another question to ask. Do you have the information on that state program where people who wanna hire addicts who are, or former addicts who are in recovery?
I, not what I'm talking about is there a specific one you're talking about, because there's a, a few that I'm thinking of, like jobs for hope.
That might be the one where they pay the employer, uh, reimburse salaries for the participants.
You're, that's the newer one you're talking about. Yeah, it's kind of like the replacement for jobs in hope, I do believe, I'm not sure, but, um, we still get jobs in hope. This was in there, but yes, there is a new program that is paying on both and we do have, um, uh, lady that works through that office, she's from, uh, Raleigh County, I think she works. We, we met her through at MRS, the contact over there, and she's done a presentation for us and she'll be going back to do more, speak to our vendors, so.
Can you, can you provide me the contact information? Thank you.
The fact I have some of them on the phone, but I'll email it. I'll send it over to you.
Okay.
Can you send it to all commissioners?
Yeah. Yeah, I know Commissioner Luisas is interested in employing people through the program and, and I had told him about it. I, I had heard about it and I think we talked about it before. We talked about creating our own program if we um, chose to, but, um, I know some of our local business, uh, leaders in Oak Hill do use the program to great success. The owner of Pinheads sung the praises through the roof, so I'm gonna connect you with her. I saw that on my list.
She, she's all about. She's all about it.
Yeah.
And it seems like the, uh, the folks, especially those we have a topic report, one of their work. She works well with them and they've been pretty successful over there as well, so. We appreciate her.
Yeah, she's, she's awesome.
I'll send you all that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, and thanks for everything you've been doing for us, giving us some peace of mind.
I hope it continues for a long time.
Same.
Thank you all. You've been great to work with, very supportive. If we talk to you on that, happy new year.
Happy new year. All right, and the, um, second raise I wanted to move is a ten thousand dollar, uh, per year raise for Ruth Lanier effective this pay period.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
From, for everything you're doing. We appreciate you, girl. Ruth has saved this county a ton of money and a ton of headache. And it's hard to quantify. I mean, that amount. And it's hard to quantify. I mean, that amount doesn't even come close. It's not. It does not even come close to what you have been doing for awesome.
If she didn't pay attention, we talked about that, didn't she?
Well, I mean, there's a good possibility.
She does tune us out on occasion.
Yeah.
All right, let's get back to uh the ten o'clock agenda item and a little behind on the GST contract. Do we have Mr. Wadsworth on the Zoom?
Yes, I'm here.
Hey there. Um, so you know, we've had some issues over at the prosecutor's office and other places in the county, and I understand you've had some. Staffing issues there. Um, you think you're going to be able to remedy those staffing issues? In the near.
That's a good question and and um we're working on it right now. Um, you know, we're trying to make sure that um, you know, we get the right staff, you know, with the right qualifications to be, you know, uh responding. Specifically to what we're asked to come down and 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 do. That was probably our our biggest problem over the past years. We we really. Uh, we allowed some staff that hadn't had the experience um in some areas, uh and we really didn't understand. You know, where, you know, they had just not been able to 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 deliver the way they should. So, I mean, we did bring down. Uh, you know, one of our senior staff members and uh to the prosecutor's office and um from my understanding, things did go better. After he was uh involved a- and and we we have other staff members. That are, you know, higher caliber and we do intend to get them involved and and stay on top of of things and make sure we're all aware. Of, you know, whether or not we're meeting expectations. Um, and I I want to be very, very honest. Uh, I just felt like um, you know, on our side. You know, we completely missed how, you know, the 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 requests that the prosecutor had. Um, we're just getting backed up and, you know, and there there are always issues that might interfere with things being done, but it it communication. Is always, you know, necessary to make sure everyone that's involved knows what status is and. Uh, not only did our staff, you know, uh, you know, let down on communications, but I personally. In dealing with the prosecutor, I I misunderstood and and miscommunicated, so. These are all things that uh uh we don't intend to continue, you know, these, but. And I don't ever like to make excuses, but um yes, staffing. Uh, and bringing on new folks has definitely been a challenge. Uh, I don't mean to, because I'm the last person that wants to give the pandemic. You know, uh, a reason to, you know, to make excuses, but it changed our industry. It really did. Um, so you we're definitely going through some uh rearranging and modifying the way we go about doing things because it's it's a the landscape. Is different, so.
Okay, well, I I know that we have rolled out um our new emails um this year and and we were supposed to have everything done. All the new emails issued by the end of this year and then. Um, so we can give westvirginia.gov. Notice, we want to give those accounts six more months just to be. Safe for everybody who has those accounts to be able to forward their mail. And then we're going to stop paying for those. So I just want to make sure you understand that support for those those email addresses is is a high priority for us because. The purpose of getting our own domain and doing that is so we can respond better and more um effectively and efficiently to FOIA requests. And requests of information for the public. And so all of our community, you know, official communications are um tracked. And available for public, you know, information. So it's really important to us that we be transparent and we want to make sure that. That that, you know, that our emails are working. That's how we communicate with the people we serve.
We will definitely make sure that we get that taken care of and we'll be timely and um and we'll take care of it competently.
Well, I think I think I'd like to give you guys an opportunity, I mean, in my view. Um, but I really am reluctant to sign a and a one year contract at this point, given the issues we have. Um, so I'd like to move that we uh approve the contract for uh six months. And then we can renew at the six months, assuming everything has been. You know, everything, the services is what you intended to be.
That's second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, now see Chief Purdue has walked in with a new deputy.
I think the sheriff's.
Yeah.
He's the only. He's the only deputy that that Rod has to look up to.
Did you have anything that um?
I do.
Okay.
Dylan with the range, uh, I mean, I know it's been time consuming and just trying to get people to come down here and meet you. And I met with uh John over there. And uh. John's life and got moved off. I mean, John Ford is great. He gave him a beer, but he went above and beyond. What I remember that is he is. He called it part of this quote. I know you probably need two more before we get started. Y'all familiar with the yellow gate is what we dropped down to the pond? It's top of the hill. He's going to fix that road. All the way down past the pond, gravel, even if we wanted to clean the pond up on the side, it's part of the quote too. You know, when they call it uh cat hills.
Mm hmm.
And cat head out where people can fish, they'll all everybody try it up in one spot. And we kind of moved it from where we were thinking of. We thought of it before, decided Dylan was house down there. It's everywhere near his house. We pass upon, gravel pass upon, we straight to the holler towards the gas well. That's where they have all their, they burn stuff, park burn stuff, stuff like that. Clean it all up, gravel, there are shooting lanes and stuff like that. A hydro city. He said, I want to make make it look good. He said, it's my name.
Oh, so you're talking of the park.
Yes. Yes.
So is that Phil County property or?
It's sold to my next. Those laws, I couldn't do it like that. We're way within our boundaries. Just outside all night. Are you familiar with what I'm talking about?
Well, I I think I am, but I'm just wondering, it property is not, is it county property? Or is it, is it, is it the lease property or is it?
It's not the lease. The county property, Mr. Brad was here. Whatever, kind of revamped it from where it's a place property is in a county. Uh, the farm is right there. It's a natural bomb. It's slant. On the side of the hillside, which you have to utilize it for our advantage. Um, he'll come in and he'll trouble it up. It bugs us through the lease property for about fifty to sixty yard from. The point of completion from the range, so thanks. Um. One thing about we have to leave the road open. We want to re- readjust the road to the left about twenty feet from the gas company government and tender wheels, things like wheels. But he gave a quote, that is trying to get on with some else here. I raised out the Steve Janin, get him in the valley. Steve, when we find back the second name, you're trying to get up this week and look at. I know we need two more, two more quotes, but uh. But Johnny, he favored hanging up forward, but he went above and beyond trying to clean the pond up a little bit to fix that road, make it support the area. And I don't know if you ever get back up in the river and burn stuff that would keep it down.
How far is it from the animal shelter?
Animal shelters.
It's. Michelle first here, and this is where he's talking about.
That'll be much. We still need to get it.
Yeah, somewhere around two miles from each other.
This is what it proposes says. He kind of eyeball a little bit in case he's. And the gravel property. Four hundred fifty yards from the yellow gate to the new range, level across the hundred fifty foot by three hundred twenty foot. Uh gravel at ten to fifteen car parking with range land four feet wide. The lane will be four foot wide, gravel. From the three to five to seventeen fifteen twenty to twenty five. Clean the pond up and uh. Make it make area presentable. Now, I told him like the shelters stuff, we'll do ourselves. We'll go that same money. I've got a lot of money that's a lot of food from this one. I don't want to see what he's proposing.
Okay.
But he also said, I know that we have to. He said, it can start early. Mine will be out February first.
I mean, how does that work if we've asked for other quotes and we have or not?
You did you publicize them?
I think that was a little different where the money was given this from the state or not. Or a range general stipulations is with it. I think it's uh.
See, I think that money was supposed to be directed to spend on that piece of property. I mean, I'm just, I'm trying to look. I mean, I thought that money was supposed to be.
It wasn't for for a specific piece of property. It's just for a range.
Yeah. I just want to make sure.
Yeah, we have.
Yes.
The discussion, I I remember talking specifically because he. He was even asking, do you know where you're going to put it yet? Like when we did the big photo.
And things I know we we like to do with Mr. Lewis and stuff with the ski brings and stuff like that. I think we're in a better position to do it where we just know that today because you don't worry about other people. And uh trying to get permission to use it when you're not using it. Now we have our own range. Where the technicals are for it and we can teach you.
Can can we pull that up on the, I'm just curious where it's at. I'm still, well, can can we pull it? I got property viewer here. I'm looking at property and I s- I want to show the commission. I want you to show the commission where it's at on.
Why you had a mic, but is anyone had? I didn't want to take it from you. My friend, they're just so.
That's why I said, if you pull up, can you pull up West Virginia property viewer? Just pull up West Virginia property viewer. I got it on here, but my phone is, it's small.
Well, I think we're getting information right now, so I think.
Oh, okay. Okay, okay, yeah. Yeah, I just.
We can all stay here and do it. I just want to move to.
No, no, I I agree.
Oh, yeah, we, where is it? Oh, nine forty five. How did I skip that?
I was confused.
Oh, totally skipped it. Okay, let's do that real quick and then we'll get off the record and. And you can.
I just have one more.
Okay, so um Armstrong Creek. Armstrong Creek is in dire straits. Um, they have gone the majority of the last two holidays, three holidays without water. Um, all the water resources are being sent to Raleigh County, and I understand there's a crisis there, but there's also a crisis in Armstrong Creek. So um. I asked that this be put on the agenda for us to ask the state for an emergency declaration. Remember when we were briefed. Um, at the last meeting by the Public Service Commission. Folks, and he said an emergency declaration may help. Get that done in about half the time and things that they need done. So I think we have to ask. And satisfactorily, I'm not sure that we declare, even though we have. Uh, we can go ahead and declare an emergency, but I think it's the governor's authority that actually activates anything.
Right.
Um, so I mean, wouldn't hurt for us to declare one for Armstrong Creek. And I think we need need to send a letter to the governor and ask that he declare one as well because. Because of the other emergency, Armstrong Creek is not even getting the resources that it otherwise would be able to get. And and it's no less, I realize that there's no hospital up Armstrong Creek, but there is, there are disabled people who are trying to live up there. And uh who don't have water and trying to haul their own water from creek. So I'm going to move that we uh declare a state of emergency for Armstrong Creek in Bay County and that we, for the water situation. And that we ask the governor to do so as well and get the help they need up there.
Just second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Do we have a letter ready for that? Yeah, Amy, the details.
Should make sure.
For that, to to back that letter up, like the facts are in the minutes for the twelve fourteen meeting, the morning meeting. And if you want to pull something together and send it to me, I'll take a swipe at it and then we'll. And and we can just let them stamp after everybody agrees.
That's for the entire year. That's through the end of December.
That's about me. I've been on more of the day, but this calls.
I don't know how I.
Well, if you get that.
Check that by.
I should have said something.
Maybe she wants to do that.
No, I would have gotten that over with. I hope people weren't on there waiting on it. Wasn't too bad for us, but still. Sorry about that, Armstrong Creek. You guys are on there waiting. Also, I know, I know that. Their executive committee of the Republican Party has been um. Was approached by the Democratic Party about raising money or contributing money to the people in Glendale. And I brought to their attention that we have people here in Fayette that need water as well. So I believe and. Probably let the Democratic Party know as well. So if anybody's donating, that we can. Gather money for both sides. Would you do that for me, Michelle? Let them know? Would you let? Yeah, would you let them know about the Armstrong Creek situation? Also, there's a situation in Paint Creek where the hazmat spill was. So those are the two areas where we're trying to get donations for water, at least for Bay County. Okay, all right, so are we done with today's formal business agenda? Okay, I'm going to move to adjourn and then we can.
Second.
Ask our questions.
Also, I went down and pulled the statements, the mileage, all the vehicles in the thick.